Hello, my name is Teresa Bethune and I'm the Board Vice Chair for the Community Media Center of Carroll County. Welcome to the District One Carroll County Board of Commissioners Republican Candidates Forum, being held at the Tonny Town Senior Community Center. This forum is being streamed live on the Community Media Center's website at carrollmediacenter.org. It will be rebroadcast on Cable Channel HD 1086, starting Wednesday, June 8th at 7:00 PM, and will be available on YouTube and the CMC website. All five candidates running for the 2020 Republican Primary Election on July 19th represent District One. Board of Commissioners were invited to participate. Four are able to join us this evening. Jesse A. Gibson was unable to attend. The CMC provides this programming as a public service to the community. Our goal is to establish an equal platform for political advocacy and provide local residents with information about individuals seeking public office in the upcoming primary election. We encourage citizens to learn more about the candidates and take an active part in the electoral process. At this time, I will turn the program over to our moderator for the evening, Bob Blueball, the CMC's Managing Editor for Digital Content, to explain the rules and open tonight's forum. Bob?
Thank you, Teresa. As moderator this evening, I'll introduce the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. Following the forum introductions, we'll have two minutes to answer a question. Everyone will get the identical question, and there will be no back and forth. This is not a debate, it's an informational forum. At the end of the Q and A session, we will go again to each of the candidates for a two-minute closing statement. All responses will be timed, and the timekeeper will give the candidates a heads-up when there is about a 30 seconds remaining, and a bell will ring at the two-minute mark, signifying that it's time to end that answer. Among the questions being asked tonight are questions that were emailed from readers of the Community Media Center, the Carroll County Times, and also some submitted questions from the audience members tonight. So thank you very much in advance. Let's see. Tonight's forum is being recorded, as Teresa said, and so we do ask that everyone turn their cellphones off and please refrain from any sort of applause or any sort of noise during the forum. And with that, let's begin. Each candidate now has two minutes to present an opening statement, and we're going to start with Mr. Ray Fava.
Thank you, Carroll County Media Center, Tonny Town Senior Center, for hosting this event, and thank you all in the audience for your attendance and coming to this event. I'm Ray Fava. I'm a Christian, a husband, and a father. I own a small house in New Windsor with my wife and two kids. I grew up in Carroll County. I went to Century High School. I have an Associate's Degree in Accounting from Carroll Community College. Afterwards, I got accepted into the Exclusive Entrepreneurs Fellows Program at the University of Baltimore, graduating with a degree in Business Administration with a specialization in Entrepreneurship. I have a unique understanding of how accounting and small business works, which qualifies me for this job. I currently work in information technology despite my prior degrees. My success in this career path proves that I am a fast learner. I am running to restore conservative leadership to Carroll County. Over the past two years, we had county commissioners that believed in lockdowns and mandates instead of the Constitution and freedom. Article 44 of the Maryland Declaration of Rights clearly states that our rights cannot be violated in times of war or other pleas of necessity. I will ensure that these mandates never happen again. Here in Carroll County, we also have the best school board in Maryland, and while the delegation supported them in their fights with the state over the last two years, the commissioners did not. As a parent, since I'm a parent, you can count on me as Commissioner to fight on behalf of parents and children for our schools. We also need commissioners who understand economics. The high inflation we are seeing means that commissioners will have to lower the property tax rate in order to ensure that there's no property tax hike. Refusing to decrease them is a default tax hike. We are all suffering enough in this Biden economy. As county commissioner, I will restore conservative leadership to Carroll County, and I ask for your vote this primary.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Mr. Thomas E. Irwin, Jr.
Hello, I'm Tom Irwin. I'm going to do this rather extemporaneously. I'm a native of Carroll County. I grew up in Carroll County, and I'm a product of Carroll County Public Schools. I graduated from Westminster High School. From there, I went on to University of Maryland at College Park to study agriculture and got a BS degree, Bachelor of Science in Crop Science Agronomy. I have worked in the agribusiness area in Carroll County for the past 35 years. I don't want us to concentrate on the agriculture part as much as I do the business part, because I can assure you, if you do business in agriculture, you are going to have a taste of all business facilities. I have started businesses. I have managed multimillion-dollar businesses. I have hired people. I have fired people. I own and operate my own farm here in the Tonny Town footprint. For the last 39 years, I've had a seasonal roadside market in East Baltimore that I have, we do in the summertime. I'm a Certified Crop Advisor, a Nutrient Management Consultant, and a Licensed Commercial Applicator in both Maryland and Pennsylvania. Presently, I volunteer as the Chairman on the Carroll County Agricultural Land Preservation Advisory Board. I also was a member of the 75,000 Acre and Growing Committee the commissioners put together in celebration of that milestone in the last year. The biggest thing I want to get across to you is that I am a taxpayer here in Carroll County. I own preserved land, farm, residential property, and I want to make sure that our tax dollars are spent efficiently and correctly in county government. Right now, we have a runaway inflation, and our dollar is very important to us. I eagerly await your questions, and again, I'm Tom Irwin. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Sean Schaefer.
I'm Sean Schaefer. I was born here in Carroll County as well. I've lived here all my life. I have always lived out in the country, so I appreciate the farms and the environment, and those are things I'd like to protect. I'm trained as an electronics engineer, specifically in electronic systems. I've worked for several defense contractors, making equipment to save the lives of our troops overseas. I'm a troubleshooter. I know how to find problems, and I know how to seek the solutions to them. And I'd like to put that sort of skill set into local government to help protect the environment, to help keep the farms from being destroyed for housing developments that we have no infrastructure to support. And I want to help in make the government more efficient to deal with the problems we're having right now and as well as in the future. And I would like to keep our county as green as we can, but still also bring it up to the 21st century, to make use of technology and our funds in a much smarter way than we have recently been suggested to do. And I would like to, and I realize that we've been moved around a little bit because of our districts. I'm from Westminster. I know I don't know much about Tonny Town, but there's been some recent issues regarding farming and being turned into development for infrastructure, which Mount Airy, where I've been previously, has had similar issues. So I know what's, where this is coming from, and I'm hoping to work to fix it and any other issues that we may have in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Joe Vigliotti.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, everyone, whether you're here in person or watching, for taking the time to be involved, and thank you to my fellow candidates as well, for not only being here tonight, but for being willing to offer yourselves up for public service. For those of you who may not know me, I'm Joe Vigliotti. I'm a third-term member of the City Council of Tonny Town, where I currently serve in the capacity as both Mayor Pro Tem and Liaison to the Police Department. Professionally, I'm a writer and graphic designer, and in the past, I've worked everything from retail to home improvement. I'm also a graduate of Mount St. Mary's University, where I studied history, political science, and philosophy. I've always sought to apply my education and real-world experience to my elected service. And I readily admit that I'm not perfect. I don't know everything. I'm not afraid to ask questions, and I'm not afraid to be the only one to take a stand on a given issue. But I always try to follow my heart to do what is right. The past few years have been difficult for us, and we still face a number of challenges ahead. But for us, the greatest overall challenge is making sure that our home, Carroll County, remains the home we know and love. That's why I'm running for Commissioner, because I believe we can face what's ahead, but more importantly, out of love for home. With God's help, that means supporting those things which make us who we are: our values, law enforcement, fire and EMS, individual rights, parental rights, agricultural preservation, real education, community, and more. It means opposing things like renewed calls for mandates and lockdowns, opposing budgets which might contain funding for things like critical race theory, opposing a county executive, and exercising caution toward developments, and on. Through the course of this evening, I hope to be able to talk more about these and other issues which face us. Again, I thank you for being here tonight, and I'm looking forward to your questions.
Thank you. Now we're going to move to the Q and A portion of the evening. And we'll continue in alphabetical order, but we'll start with a different person each time, so everyone gets a chance to go first. And we'll try to have about an hour's worth of questions, something like that. We'll try to keep this to about an hour and a half tonight. Anyway, we'll start with Mr. Irwin, and for everyone. Regardless of who wins this election, a new Commissioner will represent District One on a five-person board consisting of at least four individuals who've never done the job before. What are you doing, or what are you planning to do, to ensure you're ready to be an effective leader from the day you're sworn in?
You are correct. We are going to have at least four new Commissioners representing our county. District One, absolutely a new one. I am prepping myself by being involved on a county level with the, I'm sorry, with the Ag Preservation Board that I serve on. And in that capacity, I get an idea how to see some of the issues that are coming down the pike here for us right now. So in answer to your question, I am keeping myself abreast of the situations that we have that are going on in the county. And I basically, that's how I see being prepared for it.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
As an engineer and troubleshooting, I can't necessarily prep for issues beforehand because I have to be in there to take a look at and analyze it. I've always analyzed equipment and technology while it's running, so I can see the behavior of it and figure out what has or has not worked correctly. Otherwise, I have, I can prep up on issues like taking a look at what meeting agendas may have been or what the commissioners have decided before. But I really need to be hands-on in order to figure out what to do and what to correct and apply my troubleshooting skills and my analysis skills as to whatever the current issues may be.
Thank you. Mr. Vigliotti?
Two ways. First of all, I have, as I mentioned, I have, I'm in my third term on the City Council of Tonny Town, and over the last nine years, I've built up a number of cooperative relationships. I've gained a lot of experience serving at this level, and I've gained a lot of experience in the networking that I've done with our county commissioners, our state delegate, our state Senator. And I'll use this in my capacity if I'm elected as Commissioner. And the other way to be effective in the role is to ask questions. Again, I'd mentioned a few minutes ago that I don't know everything. I'm not afraid to ask questions. I'm not afraid to research, ask for more information. And it's also, I believe that in order to be an effective leader, that you have to be willing to listen, to learn, and to understand. And with these in summation, I believe that I will be effective in the role. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fava?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I like the question because it's important. So anyway, I want to first say that I hope we have five new Commissioners in Westminster next year, because we need new blood in those seats. Secondly, one of the things I want to emphasize is I have developed a working relationship with every candidate running for Commissioner. So I am very familiar with who else are, who are going to be in those other four seats. Thirdly, I do a lot of research. I have spent a good amount of time reading the 2023 county budget. I have been reading the county code. In addition to creating working relationships with some people in the county government, I have also been, again, researching what the county law is, what the county code is, what the county budget is, looking at areas where we could maybe trim down other areas which I'm looking at will be problem areas in the future. Or by problem, I mean these areas are going to want more money in the future and are projected to get more money in the future. When I looked at the Carroll County budget last night, I see a, the next five years, from 2024 onward, we are projected to have deficits. And I see that as a major problem going into the office. So that is what my research is telling me. And in addition to developing working relationships with the other people that are also running for Commissioner, since we will have new seats and new faces, I think, you know, there's no time like the present to start working on solutions to solve these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Along those lines, the current Board of Commissioners has had to make a lot of difficult decisions over the past four years that I'm sure they had no idea they were going to have to be faced with. So I'm wondering, you know, how would you rate the job done by the Commissioners over the past four years? And basically, how would you have handled the COVID-19 crisis? Would you have done anything different? And I'm sorry, we'll start with Mr. Schaefer this time.
Actually, I do have an important question regarding COVID, because in the past, I have actually visited pointed distribution sites and tested equipment that was there. And during the two years of the pandemic, the state of Maryland, who controls those sites, never opened one of them and never used them for the distribution of vaccines or medical supplies for doctors and nurses. And I would really hate to have some questions for Governor Hogan and for Mima as to why this never happened. And one of the things I certainly would have done differently was to make use of plans that were already in place to help support and distribute necessary supplies and medicines to the people who needed them in Carroll County. Because Carroll County has at least seven or nine of those sites at many of our schools. And so I would certainly want to make use of what we already have in place to respond to these incidents, rather than have all of these meetings and all have all these daily and weekly press conferences in which nobody knows what the next guy next to him is doing, and there is no plan in place. Well, I mean, we have plans in place, but nobody apparently knows of them and has ever executed any of them. And so that would certainly be what I would do differently.
Thank you. Mr. Vigliotti?
Well, so I think initially, when the pandemic broke, there was a lot of concern about it. There was a lot we didn't know about it. But over time, as we learned more about it, I do feel that we should have opened up more quickly, or quicker, I'm sorry. If you look at the trajectory of it as it occurred, the best thing that government could have done was to get out of the way of people. It should never have had to have been a choice between opening a business or having to go to jail for opening the business. And while that was certainly not the situation specifically here, the overall threat of that, the reality of the situation, and the knowledge that we gained over time specifically about the virus, how it operated, how it could be treated, how it could be dealt with, the best thing, again, the government could have done was to get out of the way as rapidly as possible. And as early as that spring, I had written a column for the Carroll County Times, arguing that it was time to end the lockdowns. There were a lot of unintended consequences and a lot of situations that arose from a stringent lockdown that are going to be manifested and felt over time. For example, a number of people were not able to obtain the medical services and the medical treatments that they required for non-life-threatening issues, which have, at this point, metastasized into more serious issues. And so I think that, you know, again, at the very beginning, with the two-weeks lockdown, the voluntary two-weeks lockdown, I don't think that was unreasonable. But again, once we learned more about it, it was unreasonable to expect people not to continue to live their lives, especially knowing the risks.
Thank you. Mr. Fava?
Yeah, I just want to say, first of all, I don't remember having a choice in whether to be locked down in my house or not. I don't remember that being voluntary, and I don't think many of you remember that being a voluntary lockdown. Second of all, this was unconstitutional from the start. We, the government does not have the right to take away your freedoms in order to find out whether it was, an issue was worth taking away your freedoms for. That is not how, you know, that is not how America works. The government first needs to prove a necessity. And first of all, the Maryland Constitution, as I cited in my opening statements, Article 44 of the Declaration of Rights clearly states that the rights apply in times of war or other pleas of necessity. The county commissioners and the Maryland state government violated the Maryland Constitution as well as the United States Constitution, and they did not have the right to do that. So therefore, I cannot say that a lawless government was a good government and handled the situation appropriately. Additionally, if we, as we look at the data, it showed that the lockdowns were pretty much useless, and the mandates didn't really help anywhere where applied, and that we would have been better off following a more free model like the state of Florida has become known for, the state of Iowa, or the state of South Dakota. So we should have followed their path of not locking down, not instituting mandates. And I think as county, and as county commissioner, if I were a county commissioner at that time, I would have fought the state government on those lockdown issues. Because the lockdowns were unconstitutional, and we're still reaping the negative effects of those lockdown policies, especially in our economy right now, and all the money we printed as a result. All of this was a bad idea. All of it was. And it's unfortunate that we're going to be reaping the consequences of these bad decisions for the years to come. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin?
All right. As far as the job status and the duties of the Commissioner and their performance over their last term, I'm not going to throw rocks at anyone from here. Hindsight is always 20/20. Having said that, there's a couple issues I think we have to take a look at. The introduction of these solar farms through the Community Solar Project that they're doing on agricultural remainder ground, I think is obscene. I don't think there's a need to tie up good productive land with solar panels. We haven't yet figured out what is going to be the result of these panels after we have rainwater splashing off of them for the next 25 years, when they're built from heavy metals, running onto our ground, which we, most of us get our drinking water from groundwater. I'm a little concerned about that. I also don't like to see some of the unfunded liabilities that come out of Annapolis that we're told we should take this free money, because as you guys all know, there is no such thing as free money. Somebody's going to have to pay for this when the free part of it runs out. And you're either going to have to be the anti-Santa Claus and get rid of some of these programs, or you're going to have to come up with the money somewhere. As far as COVID-19, when that first started, I can distinctly remember our leaders asking us to give them two weeks so we can get ahead of the curve. We were concerned about our older citizens. And me, like a lot of folks, said, "All right, two weeks, I'll do that. If it means that we're going to help some of these folks and get them in a hospital that they need, I'll do that." Then it went on and on. As I'm running out of time, my main point here was how we dealt with some of these masks. I had dealt with restricted-use pesticides, where we were required to fit-test an N95 mask. They don't work if you have facial hair, and they hardly work if you don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll start with Mr. Vigliotti on this one. So what would be your plan for ensuring law enforcement has all the needed resources, particularly given that in District One, local police departments are scarce? So how will you be sure to fund the police for the county?
Well, by making sure that they have proper funding and listening to the things that the sheriff says he needs. A couple of, a couple of weeks ago, I spent the morning with one of our deputies riding around through the county. And, you know, a lot of the things that they are in need of, for example, new vehicles having to be rotated in and rotated out. Those are things that are outside of our power. The companies that are producing the cars haven't been able to keep up with demand for the productions that we're having to keep older vehicles in the fleet. A lot of the things that we can improve upon, for example, GPS technology so the deputies know where all of the other deputies are at any given time, something like that, which is incredibly helpful when they're responding to a call or when a deputy is actually in distress. I witnessed it myself during this, this morning, that the, or not, not this morning, but during the morning that I was with this deputy, that the GPS system wasn't functional. It wasn't working. And making sure that our deputies and our sheriff's department have the tools and the resources necessary to effectively do their job is going to be paramount, especially given the fact that we are battling a drug and opioid crisis, and that drugs are continuing to pour in here from New York. Our sheriff's department has been absolutely fantastic in fighting these things, but we also have to make sure that we continue to support them, continue to fund them, and continue to make sure that they have the resources necessary to deal with this evil. And it is evil, these drug dealers. They are absolutely evil. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fava?
Yeah, I hope you guys are asking a question about the opioid epidemic. But in this question about law enforcement, you know, you look at the county budget. We can work with law enforcement to ensure that they are fully funded to do their jobs. Because I support law enforcement because I support the premise that we should have local sheriffs running law enforcement in the county. I love the idea of having a sheriff who's an elected official, being able to carry out law enforcement because there's, you know, public accountability that we get from that, that we don't necessarily get from the Maryland State Police. So I love having local police. Additionally, along those lines, I am current, I want to raise the issue of what has recently come out of the Carroll County Sheriff's Department in that we had a sheriff's deputy commit perjury in order to secure a bogus search warrant, and who knows how many convictions were secured with a very unreliable officer. And I'm disappointed that that officer is only being relegated according to the latest news updates on that. So I'm very disappointed to see that. But overall, I want our Carroll County Sheriff's Department to be fully equipped to fight the opioid epidemic, which by all accounts, I think we're doing better in Carroll County than in other counties in Maryland, so that's good news. But obviously, there's a lot of work to do on this nationwide, because again, this is an issue that largely stems from our open border, open porous southern border, and it affects us here in Carroll County. So I want to support law enforcement because this is a major issue in our county. And as Commissioner, I will ensure that we fully fund the police to these ends.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin?
My brother-in-law is a retired Maryland State Trooper. My brother, I gotta watch how I say this. My brother is a high-ranking management official in a local police department. We regularly have some discussions on policing. I'm fascinated by it. I'd never be able to do it, but I admire those who do. I like talking to them about things that work and things that don't work. And I know in any of our departments, there are areas where we may fund something that we're probably not getting the best return on our dollar spent. I would concentrate on basics. I would get back to very much basics on what is working, what is good policing, and what's not working here in Carroll County. Funding, obviously, is very important, and safety is very important. We have to make sure that we're prosecuting those that are breaking the law. We have to make sure that we are enforcing even some of the most basic of laws. I'll give you a prime, real quick example. We had, a couple of years ago, we had a truck come down the road and vandalize one of our buildings that sits out closer to the road. And when the sheriffs come out, they asked me to describe what I saw, which unfortunately, the lighting wasn't the best, but I could identify the truck and get the range of years, but I could not see in the truck. All the glass was tinted black. And I said, "Isn't that, I didn't think you were allowed to do that." He said, "Well, you're not." So what I'm getting at is, if you want to ID some people that are committing crimes, make sure that we can see in there. There's basic laws that need to be followed and enforced. That's how I would start. Absolutely fund them, get them what they need, but cut through the fat and run it efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
I also have family that's former law enforcement. My father is a retired Ballmer County Police Officer. My mother is a retired RN. I've worked for at least two defense contractors and is a licensed amateur radio operator, and I've worked on a few projects there. And for me, emergency services, that includes law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, I see it as infrastructure. We have to fund it. And if we don't fund it, we're just going to have problems. And I also want to focus on not just their funding, but also equipment and training to make sure that they're the best that they can be. And I do want to focus on basics, but I also want to focus on actual criminal actions and not so much social issues, which should be better addressed as a health problem like the opioid epidemics we're having. That should be addressed as a medical issue. And that we should focus the money and efforts in our law enforcement on actual enforcement to prevent criminal acts rather than mass surveillance, like the license plate scanners that at first, our law enforcement and sheriff's department were like, "We don't want it." And then after a few months, they're like, "Oh, yeah, 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 now we have to keep it." And I'm not entirely sure what was the backpedaling there. But it's a waste of money and issue, and effort and equipment on capturing on 1% of actual violators. That's, that's just a completely ineffective waste of law enforcement. And so I would rather focus on keeping them effective, keeping them funded, and keeping them trained.
Thank you. So a couple of you just mentioned the drug epidemic. Not to be too repetitive- Uh, not to be too repetitive, but according to the monthly report from the Carroll County Sheriff's Office, there were 10 fatal overdoses in Carroll County in May. That's as many as there've been in the last four years. What do you think is county government's role in combating the opioid epidemic and what more can be done? And we'll start with you, Mr. Fava.
Um, okay. So, first, I think as county commissioner, I want to assemble a citizens' task force of local experts to tackle this issue. We can get local community experts to create a task force, you know, kind of like a, appointing to a board to solve a crisis. So, uh, that's one thing that I think we can do. And then that task force can do research on tailor-fitting a policy recommendation that is good for Carroll County. Because we don't want to just adopt what other counties are doing without researching whether it would work here in Carroll County. But with, uh, task force of local community experts, subject matter experts on the opioid, uh, epidemic, we can tailorcraft policies for Carroll County. Additionally, uh, we can also look for areas in the Carroll County code in, which can be strengthened. Uh, one of the only general, one of the only crimes that we've added to the Carroll County code is a general offense where it, which combats the idea of synthetic, uh, drugs, synthetic opioids and marijuana and stuff like that. So, they've added that to the code in order to criminalize activity like that. We could look at options for criminalizing additional activities. I do think that this is a, more of a crime issue. It is as well as a mental health and drug issue, especially because you look at the overdose statistics, it skews heavily young towards men, uh, maybe women, probably mostly men in my age category. So, I just, you know, I, in high school, I believe one of my homeroom classmates has since died of a drug overdose from this pandemic. So, you know, I know people that this affects deeply and, and we, we gotta hit the supply because the way I see, the way I look at something like a vice is that supply begets demand. Like, yes, we have these internal desires, you know, for getting high and stuff like that, but if the demand, if the supply isn't there, the demand will go away. The external temptation will go away.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin?
One of the advantages I have of being seasoned and being in Carroll County and working in business for the number of years that I have are the number of contacts that I have developed over the years. I'd claim not to know too much about, uh, the drug problem. In fact, when I was in school, my father made it very clear to me that if I was getting involved in drugs, my best bet was to go to the police because they would not hurt me. And he assured me that he would. And I took that very seriously and for that reason, I don't fool with them. Now, unfortunately, I don't think that approach is going to work everywhere, but I would, I would absolutely get in contact with people in either other police agencies or municipalities, and I'm going to find out what is working. I do not want to spend my tax dollars or your tax dollars on some harebrained idea or scheme that will not work. I want to know what is working. Proven technology is the way to go with handling that. In addition, there's two sides to this. It's the, it's the supply side and the user side. Education to the user and the people that are supplying it, hammer them. Find them, arrest them, incarcerate them, do whatever you can to the letter of the law. I, I just wouldn't tolerate any, any forgiveness. We don't want to see any recidivism. Done. I honestly think that if we take a no-nonsense approach to it and we get some expertise from people who know what has worked, I think we can do our part in it. We're dealing with a big thing nationwide, so it's not just our county, but unfortunately, with our rural setting and some of our surroundings, I guess we're easy peckings, so we have to be aware of that and, uh, and go after the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
I also agree with the issue of supply side and user side issues on this, but I see it more as a health problem than a criminal problem. The dealers and the drug dealers, the suppliers, they, that's definitely a criminal issue and law enforcement, law enforcement needs support on that. But as far as the users go, the opioid crisis is a manufactured epidemic from the pharmaceutical companies and they need to be held responsible. They made this problem, they made drugs that are a thousand times more deadly than opium, and they need to be held accountable for the problem that they've created, and they need to pay for the problem that they've created. And I don't want our jails filled with just the users, people who have health problems. I know that we give veterans a second chance when they come over after PTSD and they resort to drugs because the VA won't help them. I would hold the VA accountable for that, but I also wouldn't treat regular users as criminals when we give veterans a second chance when they're users. So, I would definitely want to create health programs to treat the users, have the pharmaceuticals pay for it, and I'd focus the law enforcement on the dealers and the supply chain.
Thank you. Mr. Vigliotti?
I think there's multiple aspects to this. I mean, obviously, first of all, you have to properly, uh, continue, continue to properly fund the sheriff and, and, uh, support aggressive law enforcement against the drug dealers. Uh, something else that doesn't really get talked about, but it is a big help, is the sheriff office across jurisdictional deputization agreement to municipal law enforcement agencies, wherein local, uh, law enforcement agents become deputies under the sheriff's department as soon as they pursue a criminal across jurisdictional boundaries. I think, uh, programs like that need to continue. Uh, certainly education, especially in schools, uh, letting kids know that this is, this is a dangerous thing. I mean, I still remember, uh, you know, DARE and every, uh, single anti-drug, uh, program that I went through as a kid, and then they've stayed with me through my entire life. Uh, another thing, uh, is, is to continue to train law enforcement and others in the use of Narcan training. Um, I, I've heard from a number of law enforcement agents who've been successfully able to save lives through the use of Narcan and of course, providing treatment for people who are using. Um, and then of course, there's one other aspect of this as well, and this is where, uh, uh, cooperation with other elected officials at, at, uh, the state level is important, and that's to work with our delegates and our state senator to oppose drug legalization. It's probably only a matter of time before marijuana becomes fully legalized in this state. And the more liberal we become with our drug laws, the more dangerous things are going to become. Because when you legalize something that becomes a tacit, it becomes this, this, this assumption that because it's legal, there's a tacit approval of being able to do these sorts of things. And if we're going to combat this, we have to be able to do it at every single level. If you make these things legal, then we're not going to be able to go after the drug dealers in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Could each of you outline your vision or strategy for economic development in Carroll County? We can start with Mr. Irwin.
All right. Uh, economic development in Carroll County, uh, we are very unique in this county. One of our unique qualities is the amount of preserved farmland that we have in Carroll County. Uh, we have, we are number one in the state of Maryland as far as acres preserved through easement purchase, and we're number two in the nation. And that may sound romantic or Norman Rockwell in some cases, but the fact is that building lots that are available in and around preserved agricultural land are going to demand a premium, and that is only going to increase, uh, especially as our neighboring counties get more built up. As far as businesses, I believe strongly in having a straightforward, basic, simple economic plan for encouraging business here in Carroll County. There is, uh, we have decent roads in the county, and I, I think through limiting government involvement and making our county government more business-friendly will allow even further economic development, uh, from businesses outside that. We're seeing right now, uh, here in our district, an influx of, uh, Pennsylvania Dutch moving in the area, and they're right there, every one of them's putting up a greenhouse and, and back to growing tobacco, which the taxpayers of Maryland bought out some years ago, but here it is in the county. Uh, in my crop site, I had never really seen, uh, tobacco grow, especially in Carroll County. I'd seen it in Southern Maryland years ago. But our county certainly has a lot of opportunity for, for development and, uh, business economy. And I think that, uh, if we, at least as a commissioner, I would go out and talk to some of these businesses and find out what is, uh, what's holding them back from expanding or hiring more people here within the county. Because communicating with folks, especially if you can get them in a, in a somewhat social setting, you learn a lot quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
My issue when it comes with businesses locally is that they don't hire locally. You know, um, I have worked in a number of businesses here in Carroll County and most of the employees come from Pennsylvania. So, I'm one of the more recent employer, employers I worked for, some of the employees came from Ohio and Kentucky. We have a large pool of talented people in Carroll County, but we have no jobs for them in Carroll County. According to the, uh, state of Maryland, the fastest career growing in Carroll County is a cashier. We keep bringing in retail stores, we keep bringing in restaurants, we keep bringing in people whose only job skills are waitstaff and stockboys. This isn't going to work. We have a large population in Carroll County with technical skills and training, but their jobs are in DC, Baltimore, or Pennsylvania. Here locally in Carroll County, if we have a technical job, we, they bring in those employees from outside Carroll County. So, we have sufficient technical skills, we have sufficient education, we have a population that can do the job. We just need to get them jobs and get them working. And that's what I want to focus on. I want to focus on if a company, if a business comes to Carroll County, they have to hire locally. And I know that there are union rules and regulations in which they have to give existing employees first pick, and that's fine, but after that, the, the pick should be local. And that's really what we need to develop Carroll County. And I would even support people starting their own businesses so that way we can develop local businesses that will hire locally.
Thank you. Mr. Vigliotti?
Uh, so, it's, it's been mentioned, I think, a couple of minutes ago, agriculture is this county's number one industry, and I think agricultural preservation is something that the county needs to continue to pursue. The last I've heard that we have more than 77,000 acres of agricultural land preserved, and that's just not enough. Uh, something else has been a big driver of business and, and industry these days is, is technology. And a huge component of that is broadband access, and I'm sure we'll probably talk about that at some point later on, but, but based on the current numbers, the last numbers I've seen, there are somewhere between 1,500 and 3,000, uh, homes that are still without broadband access. And a lot of people are beginning businesses and, and working out of their homes. Um, in addition to that, working with chambers of commerce, uh, in various municipalities and at the county level, uh, to identify potentials for business, employment opportunities, those sorts of things are going to continue to be important. Uh, obviously, supporting the Department of Economic Development, assisting new businesses get oriented with the area. Uh, of course, being cautious about restrictions. I know at some point, uh, in the past, there was a, there was a move to try to, to ban all plastic bags in the county, but these are sorts of things that are going to hinder businesses rather than, than help them. And of course, from the, the financial side of things, we could always, uh, offer tax incentives. Maybe we offer facade grants or we offer, uh, tax breaks for a few years for new businesses that are opening up in the area. And of course, when we have businesses that do want to expand, uh, we need to lessen restrictions that may be in place on them, or we need to streamline the expansions. Um, so, it's, it's certainly a multiple, it's, it's certainly a, uh, it's certainly an issue that requires a multiple aspect, uh, commitments, uh, in order to continue to develop economically.
Thank you. Mr. Fava?
Well, first, I want to say that if I weren't running for office, I'd be launching an, uh, my own company, but instead, I wanted to serve the people. So, I just wanted to say, you know, it'd be an exotic jerky company because that, that's something I'm passionate about. I started that business back in college, it didn't go right because, you know, I, it was a learning experience. Most learning you can do is starting your own business. And along those lines, um, we need to encourage entrepreneurship here, and I like what Carroll Community College is doing, along with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce here in Carroll County with the Biz Challenge, uh, that they're doing. So, I do like encouraging entrepreneurship, but what I do not like is courting businesses to come here with tax credits. That is not, that is not the government's role. That is, uh, in my opinion, something the government should never do, is pick winners and losers in the economy, even if it means short-term gains. So, I don't believe in, uh, incentivizing corporations to come here with tax credits because again, every business should be playing by the same rules. Along those lines, uh, we live in Carroll County, and Carroll County is more of a residential county than a county that people work in. So, I'm, I, I understand there is a need for economic development, but the idea that we're just going to bring in like government contractors to open up here and open up an office in Westminster or something like that is not a realistic standard. I think most people understand, most residents in Carroll County do understand that a lot of work is outside the county. And, you know, and additionally, as far as supporting private sector growth, I think the way to do that is to make Carroll County competitive in terms of loosening regulations, root loosening, uh, you know, not placing high tax burdens, especially on, uh, property taxes, commercial property taxes, residential property taxes, and then encouraging entrepreneurship in our own citizens so that they can create jobs and create businesses for our economy.
Thank you. Carroll County Public Schools makes up a huge chunk of the county budget. Do you consider funding for CCPS adequate? And as a follow-up, does anything need to be done about the relationship between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education after a somewhat turbulent past few years? And if we could start with Mr. Schaefer?
For the most part, um, I would, I would fund the, the school board. I do believe funding education is important. Um, there's often a lot of questions they ask regarding whether or not you'd use specific formulas or a specific plan that's got somebody's name attached to it, and I'm not too particularly concerned about that. But I do want to make sure that our schools are fully funded, that we do have a little bit of problem with our schools when regards to technology. Uh, they often make large technical purchases and then don't do anything with them, they don't know how to use them, and then the technology disappears from the school after it opens. And so, I think we do need to at least focus on what they're spending the money on, because they're not spending it on the education, I don't think they're spending it on the students. And so, I want to make sure we don't spend too much money on administration, on technology, and then not spend the money on making sure that our students are educated and trained with the skills they need for entering the workforce, or maybe potentially even starting their own businesses or moving on to, uh, colleges.
Thank you. Mr. Vigliotti?
Well, I think that funding is certainly proper. Um, I know that the Board of Education has asked for additional money and the commissioners have provided some of that to them. Um, so, I certainly think that there is proper funding, especially if the commissioners are, are allocating additional funding over what was originally allocated. With respect to, to, uh, the, the Board of Education and the relationship with the Board of Education, certainly does need to be improved. Uh, you know, we talked a little while ago about, uh, the pandemic and, and the way that things have gone, uh, with that regard, there have been a number of recent things, uh, that have come up in the news in general, uh, in this county in particular, over the, the pride flag and the display of that in schools. Uh, the, uh, the idea of critical race theory has also been floating around. And it's important, uh, to note, to, to remember that education policy rests under the purview of the Department or the, I'm sorry, the Board of Education, and there is properly defined. So, commissioners can certainly, uh, voice their opinion one way or the other, but I'm not sure that commissioners should ever be antagonistic toward the Board of Education so long as they're doing the right thing. And I think over the past two years, they really have done the right thing. They've led the way with getting kids back in school, they have done the right thing with trying to end the mask mandates, they have done the right thing by, by arguing against things like critical race theory. Um, you know, these are all incredibly important with respect to the values of this county and who we want our students to grow up to be. Um, and, and so, I think that even in areas where you may end up disagreeing with a member of the Board of Education, a respectful disagreement is one thing, but to make fun of them or to ostracize them or to castigate them is certainly, uh, not acceptable. And if I am, uh, elected commissioner, I will endeavor to do my best to have as good a working relationship as possible with the Board of Education, because when it does come to the budget, there is overlap between the Board and between the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fava?
Uh, thank you for the question. Uh, with regards to the, uh, education funding in the county budget, we do go above and beyond the Maryland standard of funding the MOE. So, which is the Maryland-based standard of we gotta maintain the equipments and stuff like that. Anything beyond that, the county commissioners do out of the goodness of their heart. Uh, so, with that said, you know, I, we should, we have one of the best school boards in the state. And our, unfortunately, our county commissioners didn't realize that and didn't, you know, help them out in that process over the last few years, and especially when it came to school, uh, closures and then, uh, unmasking children. And, you know, again, our, our, uh, school board has also taken considerable steps at implementing a neutrality policy. We've made national news on multiple occasions because, you know, Carroll County, our public schools are under attack from very liberal forces, uh, inside and outside of the county. They want to make an example of us because we're a red county in a deep-blue state. They want to make an example of our schools, and we have parents in this county that are fighting back what's going on everywhere else. When we look at the, uh, you know, teaching pre, uh, preschoolers through third grade about sex and stuff like that, that the state wants to mandate, uh, our school board fought that and put the brakes on that, while Frederick County School Board summarily adopted what the state recommended. So, we have a good school board, but, and so long as we have a good school board, I will support them, and we can continue funding above the MOE. But if the school board decides to go liberal, I think we need to pull, pull back the funding a little bit. It's the oldest game in government, carrot and stick. That is how funding and holding the purse works. The person who holds the purse has to have some say on the policy that gets enacted because it is my job as county commissioner to make sure that your money works for you and does not subvert your values. and does not subvert your values and indoctrinate and groom your children as well.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin?
If I am Commissioner, I will make it a point to go to the Board of Education meetings. I truly have an interest in what's being taught in the schools right now. When I turn on the news at night, instantly, my blood pressure starts creeping up, because I hear some insanity that's getting poured into education. If I'm a Commissioner, that's not going to happen in Carroll County. I also know that part of government, at least on the local level, government funding, it's, compared to business, government organizations typically shoot high for what they need for budgeting, and if in the course of the year, they find they're not spending all of that, there is a fear that they won't get that amount of money in the following year. So, they use all that money. That by itself can lead to inefficiencies at times. I know that if I was on a Commissioner Board and at the Board of Education meetings, which I haven't heard too much of going on here lately, but if there is a need to threaten, to reduce back to MOE, we can certainly make that happen to make sure that we're getting the results that we want. I know that as a taxpayer in Carroll County, I saw, driving through Westminster, wherever, they had the outside school huts, and we were short-stored, we didn't have enough schoolrooms or classrooms for our students, so they're buying up land, they're building high schools. I think they built a couple more high schools, and then they turned around and closed North Carroll. And I said, "Somebody missed that along the way." We couldn't see that coming. So I know that we, there's times that we should oversee a little bit of what's going on. I know from the, on the ag preservation side, a couple of years ago, they had to pull a million dollars of funding out to fight the opioid epidemic, and I have yet to find out what that money was spent on. Was the school day longer? Did we go Saturdays and not just five days a week? I think there's times we just need to check up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. As District One is the most rural in Carroll, infrastructure can be a challenge. What would be your plan for ensuring all residents have reliable internet capability? And we'll start with Mr. Vigliotti.
So I know that the county is currently in the works of trying to alleviate the broadband access, and I think you're referring to broadband access in particular. So what they've done is they have applied and received grants to help pay for the installation of broadband. And they've also been working with broadband providers. There's a specific formula, and I forget exactly what it is, it's so many houses per mile, that the company needs to consider in order to install broadband, or some kind of broadband internet access. And they've been able to negotiate the number down to a lower number. And again, what I'd referenced earlier, there are somewhere between fifteen hundred and three thousand homes that are still outstanding. And of course, you know, as I'd mentioned, you know, internet is required now for, if you're running a home out of your business, students required for doing homework. And then even in a situation where, you know, again, God forbid, like we had the lockdowns two years ago, it was essential for students to be able to continue to learning. So I think the process of working and negotiating with the companies in order to reduce the formula they have for the installation of broadband and the securing of grants in order to help pay for that is a process that we need to continue.
Thank you. Mr. Fava?
Thank you for the question. As someone who does do telework for an IT company, I can assure you that having internet access is highly essential. So along those lines, I do support expanding our ability, because this is part of infrastructure, if you think about it. You know, and part of developing Carroll County's economy means developing infrastructure. I don't believe that we should be courting businesses to build plants here with tax credits, but I do believe that we should be providing infrastructure, like roads at work, and obviously, internet in this case, electricity, water, and all that other stuff. We should be providing infrastructure that works so that the free-market economy can grow itself. And again, part of that is expanding our internet access in this county. So I think that is essential to infrastructure, and that is why I want it to continue. And there's no reason to put the brakes on that whatsoever.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin?
I don't know a lot about how this all works, this internet. I have internet, I live in a very rural part of the county. My neighbor works for Tower Stream. So if I have an issue or problem, I get on my phone, and I say, "Jay," and Jay fixes it for me. How it works for our farm is that apparently, they get a signal over at a tower in Mayberry. They aim it to his silo, where he's got some kind of dish. It's aimed over at our place, where it has something, and there we have it, and it works very well. I said, "Jay, how would you get internet to some of these other places here in Carroll County?" He said, "It's not that tough." He said, "In a community, it has to do with the line of sight. If you can get something lined up," he said, "I can make it happen." But he said, "First of all, if you have like a development..." I heard somebody mention Whistle Stop the other day, you know, over, I don't know what district that is, over Patapsico, I think it's below sea level, but they have trouble getting that. But Jay told me that if you can get one house in there that has it, whether it be from line of sight, like with a straight shot, or a cable, from that point, you can bounce it off everything. Here in Carroll County, if we want to maintain being rural and still be up to date with the state-of-the-art internet, we're going to have to do a couple of things here that are a little bit creative. And there's people out there, a lot smarter than me, that know how to do it, and if you give them the right tools and incentive, they can get the job done. So I think it's been mentioned how important it is for businesses to have internet. We use GPS and guidance on agricultural equipment and police stuff, and I think it's absolutely doable here in Carroll County, given the right direction. Aim them in the right direction, turn them loose. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Schaefer?
I would start by making the fiber optic broadband to all houses in Carroll County. There wouldn't be any formula by like how many houses per mile or anything, just run everything to all houses. And the problem we have with things like the fiber optic internet or cable systems or a lot of these other networks is that we let a monopoly sit in place, and we can't do that. A monopoly in place isn't going to work. So I would rather have the county install all the fiber optic cables necessary for Carroll County, or potentially maybe using satellite dishes as well, and then just open up the network to anybody who wants to provide service. And then they just pay for the maintenance of the network, and we let the consumers buy whatever service they want to buy. Because at this point, we just need to get something done to get everybody on the network and to do so in a way that doesn't limit services or their capabilities, so that way they can do whatever they need to do to start their own businesses or do education if necessary or any other work that needs to be done. And we just can't sit here with trying to figure out some unique solution when there isn't really a unique solution. The solution is already in place, we just won't do it. So I would just have just one network built everywhere over the county, and let people get what services they need, so that way we can bring this up to speed, get everybody on it, and then we can move forward from there.
Thank you. So I want to make sure that we get to some of the questions that were brought with people tonight to the forum. So we'll start with Mr. Fava. Obviously, we're in the midst of a major transition in fire and emergency services in Carroll County. So how will you fund, how will you be sure that we're paying for the new all-paid fire and EMS department?
The way to do that is to forecast and have a plan. So you have a plan, because what's happening is it's going, is happening incrementally. And I'm trying to think of a way to analogize this to make it easy to understand, but the idea is that we're going to have, we're going to have the volunteer departments continue, and we're going to have a professional staff integrate with the volunteer staff across the county. And then, you know, so that we have permanent professionals everywhere is eventually the plan, and a volunteer auxiliary. So it'll still, we're still going to be working together with professionals and volunteer firefighters moving forward. And in order to fund that, we need to have a plan. We need to have a plan on how many employees we're going to hire in a given year, rather than just spree hire. We need to have a plan, and then we need to budget accordingly and gradually, in my opinion. So that, I think, is the plan. I mean, when we make the county budget, we have forecasts for like five years out. So in that forecast, we can forecast how many people we're going to be paying in a fire department, in our professionalized fire department in Carroll County, and we can forecast that year after year and budget accordingly, rather than haphazardly spree hiring now and then worrying about the funding now and then for the next few years. So we need to have a plan, do it incrementally, and that's how we, that's how we're going to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin?
One of the problems we face today is the lack of volunteers. This is not the same world we had a couple generations ago, when all of the fire companies were volunteers, everyone went around, supported the local carnivals. We paid a lot of the bills doing that. Having talked with some people that are in the fire business, whether it be volunteer or retired, paid or paid, I have heard both sides of the spectrum. One side says, "If you get in there as Commissioner, you know the first thing you've got to do is to raise taxes, right?" And I said, "Okay, I'm not so sure that raising taxes, I'm not going to limit that, but on my list of things to do, raising taxes ranks down there at the bottom. Above that is drilling my own teeth, okay? I'm really not in favor. It may come down to that, but we're going to explore every other option before we go there." The other side of the spectrum says, "You do not have to have all of these paid firemen." I suspect the truth is somewhere in the middle. So it has been mentioned that we do things incrementally, and I think that's exactly the way it should be done. If there is a need for paid positions, we will have to fill those, and we will do that as the need arises. I do not see the need in creating another government bureaucracy, expanding the local government, which then is going to have, you're involved with labor unions, and you're involved with a whole other set of variables that are going to end up costing us all more money. Let's do it, let's see how the chips fall and have the provisions to do it, but I would not jump in there headfirst without knowing how deep that end of the pool is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
Well, this goes back a little bit to what I said regarding law enforcement, in which I said I consider emergency services a piece of infrastructure. This is something that needs to be budgeted and planned, and we do need to support it the best we can. I see it as a need, just like other civil services, and I just, I wouldn't have this argument necessarily regarding an immediate rollout or an incremental rollout, because that's just an issue of how do you actually implement it? And that's something that can be discussed later. But I would definitely want to support both fire and emergency medical services. I consider it a piece of infrastructure, it's something that we need to pay for, we need to budget for, and we need to plan how to get this done. And I even asked that question, or had that thought, in the last election cycle, in which we were told how Maryland was going to help fund this transition, and I even asked the question about, "Well then, who controls the policy regarding those funds? Would it be us, or would it be Maryland?" And I never really particularly heard an answer to that. So I would definitely want to support the infrastructure of fire and emergency services along with the infrastructure of law enforcement.
Thank you. Mr. Vigliotti?
So as of recently, we've been averaging over twenty thousand calls for EMS services, and last year in particular, we broke twenty-two thousand calls. Hospitals are being overwhelmed, ambulances are having to be sent somewhere else. And the reality is that this is a problem that needs to be addressed now, and the creation of the Department of Fire and EMS Services is a step towards doing so. So it's been mentioned, the operational procedure right now is to put, is to implement or to install professional firefighters and EMS workers into each of the departments, and to take away certain, or not take away, but to help volunteer fire companies with things like human resources, so that they can focus on fighting fires. There's also been mentioned, volunteerism is waning, and that's not for any fault of the volunteer companies, it's just, it's society, it's culture right now. So while we certainly can't do or outdo salaries for our professional, or coming professional and EMS workers, fire and EMS workers in the coming years, we can try to be competitive about it, and we can try to get creative with how we go about trying to secure more workers for that. Perhaps we could offer some kind of a property tax break for people who volunteer for fire and EMS, or for people who work and live in the county for fire and EMS. In addition to that, I've spoken with a number of firefighters and a number of policymakers who suggested that a proper way to help pay for this would be through state funding and grants as well, because as Mr. Irwin had mentioned, I am not a fan of raising taxes. It's certainly not a priority of mine for sure, but at the same time, we have to remember that, again, with twenty-two thousand calls for service last year, our system is overwhelmed. It's absolutely necessary that we have a Department of Fire and EMS Services to help supplement the volunteer companies. And on top of that, the county has been helping volunteer companies to fund parts of their organizations in order to take away the costs that they have to deal with, and we should continue to do that.
Thank you. Another audience member would like to ask about your intentions concerning guns and our children and grandchildren. So if you could give me your thoughts on guns in schools, perhaps the SRO program, arming teachers, and just any thoughts you might have on the subject? And if we could start with Mr. Irwin?
Okay. If I'm understanding the question, you want to know my thoughts on gun violence that's happened in the schools?
And I guess how best to control it.
Okay. So, right, we've had a rash here recently. Gun violence, if you follow how this works, gun violence always seems to occur where we have a no-gun zone, okay? I'm not allowed to bring a sidearm into a certain place for whatever reason, and that seems to be the place that the lunatics show up with guns. They're not going to walk into a place where everybody is fully armed or carrying a sidearm. So in schools, obviously, we're going to make sure that the students are not carrying guns, we're going to make sure that the doors in the school are locked, so lunatics don't walk up and open them, and we're going to make sure that if something happens, there's somebody else in there that's trained with a sidearm or whatever that can take care of the situation. Guns aren't the problem. The problem are the people that have mental problems that are using the guns. Right now, they're debating whether or not we should have people buying an AR-15 be eighteen years old or twenty-one years old. All right? Are we not going to allow people that are eighteen, nineteen, or twenty to join the military and use guns? That age group has won a number of wars for us over the years. It's not the age that's the problem, it's somebody that has a loose screw. We need to lock up the people, or at least help the people that have mental problems, and we absolutely have to make sure that our schools are safe. Fundamentally, as far as locking things, making sure that the students aren't bringing weapons in with them, and we absolutely should have somebody in there that has, that is trained and weaponized, so that they can take care of things instantly if a problem arises. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
I'm not going to weaponize our schools. Our schools are supposed to be institutions for learning, and I'm going to keep them that way. Weaponizing our schools and arming teachers and turning them into some sort of militant compound is not the solution to the problem, and might in fact even make the problem worse. The issue with this particular problems of gun violence in our community is that our American society is just built upon the principle of just trampling over whoever you want. That's our society. That's the society we have, it's a society that has existed since the days of the Mayflower. It's how our society was built. Our society isn't lunatics shooting people, I don't believe in doing that. We should not be labeling them lunatics. We don't have a mental health care system in this nation. We don't have one. Everyone says we need to bring in more mental health programs, but the problem is, no mental health programs even exist. Mental health in this country is based upon really stupid principles developed by Freud and Jung, and it's treated almost like a form of secular religion. You're told you're crazy because the doctor says so, and there's no proof or evidence or science that backs that up. And it just becomes a way of labeling people that you don't like. It's a way of labeling somebody that you want to keep an outsider. It's a way of labeling somebody that you want to keep on the outside of society. So then what do those people do? They then attack society. This is the problem. If you stop ostracizing these people, if you stop treating them like outsiders, if you stop this issue of not redressing grievances, then they won't turn around and attack the very society that's been harming them. We have a problem in which our society will not face and look at themselves in the mirror and realize that they did this to themselves. And before we discuss gun violence, we need to discuss the issues of what society has done to people, and we need to discuss, pretty much, before my time runs out, I just want to say, what I would do is work on first a moratorium on gun sales to work out this issue, and then return to what we can open up back to.
Thank you. Mr. Vigliotti?
I'm in favor of the Second Amendment, I have absolutely no desire to curtail that whatsoever. I am completely in favor of the School Resource Officer Program. I think that's that's incredibly important, not just for the safety of students, but because it helps law enforcement to establish relationships of trust with students, so that when students identify problems, or see that there's an issue, they know they can trust the SRO, and they can report those problems. You know, if teachers have a desire to be armed, then yes, I have no problem with that whatsoever. You know, I'm also obviously in support of health services and counseling. And I think that's also important, that we check to see that protocols are up to par for information sharing between agencies, so that when problems are identified, that they can be addressed. And so from, in my mind, being proactive and, and working to prevent these things from happening is the key to doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fava?
According to the Second Amendment, gun control means two hands. So I do not believe in gun control whatsoever. It is not the prob, this is a media narrative being used to attack the Second Amendment. This is not a gun issue. This is a problem of morality. These are evil people that shoot up schools. This isn't a mental health issue. There are a lot of people that have depression, that have anxiety, that have multiple personality disorder. They don't shoot up schools. These are evil people that do this. And that's why, you know, you, you don't see the person clinging to their bibles and guns, shooting up schools. You see these, a lot of very leftist people shooting up schools. It's, you know, ideology, and it's their own morality. It's evil. That being said, in terms of trying to solve the issue, I'm not sure that a government can solve the issue, because this is more of a cultural issue. This is our, you know, the immorality in our society is manifesting itself in these ways. That being said, I hate the fact that we're only focusing on trying to mitigate the issue, instead of eliminating the issue. But in doing so, school resource officers are essential to this problem, or essential component to mitigating this risk that we have in our culture now. Additionally, what I see is that I lack confidence in the School Resource Officer Program, simply because of the events in Uvalde, Texas, where they had a school police department that did nothing. It was an off-duty Border Patrol agent that went in there, he had a child in that school, he went in there, and he did the job. So I would favor arming teachers, because what I would, what I observe from the events in Uvalde, Texas, and Parkland, Florida, is that teachers and parents are more invested in saving children's lives than in some cases, police. And that is unacceptable, in my opinion.
Thank you. So we're coming to you from the Tawny Town Senior Center, so this question from the audience seems appropriate. Will you support seniors over 70 with discounts on property taxes? And we're gonna start with Mr. Schaefer.
Yes. Yes, I would. I believe property taxes are too high for everybody, but yes, I would support the senior citizen community and property tax, either reduction, or maybe in some cases, even complete elimination.
Thank you. Mr. Vigliotti?
The answer is yes. I mean, the cost of living is incredibly high right now, especially with inflation, and those who are retired are among the groups that are being hit hardest. And if they have more of their own money that's not being paid in taxes, they're gonna be putting it into the economy. It's a simple, common sense kinda thing, and yes, I support tax breaks for them.
Thank you. Mr. Fava?
The answer is yes, and the reason why is Maryland's one of the most expensive states to retire in. That's why people move south. So if we can make it easier for people to retire in Maryland, by doing some common sense solutions, I see no issue with that. Additionally, as I said in my opening statement, that we, in order to not increase the taxes that people pay on property taxes, we actually have to lower the rate, because inflation is increasing the assessments on property values. So we actually have to lower the tax rate in order to combat the inflation, the Biden inflation that we're seeing here, so.
Thank you. And Mr. Irwin?
I will have to study that very closely. I have a difficult time segregating people and adjusting taxes, one versus another, especially when some of the seniors are gonna require more of the emergency services than others. I'm, I'm not gonna say no, but I'd, I would certainly wanna take a strong look at that, before I commit myself to saying yes. I think that all of us pay way too much in taxes, but we have mentioned a number of programs that they're coming down the pike with, that somehow is gonna have to get paid for. So I would, I would wanna take a strong look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, to wrap up the Q and A, I'd just like each of you to discuss an issue that's important to you, perhaps that we haven't touched on yet tonight. So something that you find important, that you think is important to Carroll County. And if we could, let's start with Joe Vigliotti.
All right. So, so one of the things that I've actually also spoken about as a city councilman, is making sure that emergency protocols are up to par and up to date. And that, what I'd like to do is to have the county cooperate with each of the municipalities, all of the emergency services, the law enforcement, whether it's local, whether it's the Sheriff's Department, to make sure that all of our protocols are up to, to date, everything, municipal elected officials are aware of the policies and the procedures for dealing with something like a natural disaster. You know, it's something that doesn't get talked about too much, and given, or not even just a natural disaster, but some kind of man-made situation as well. And making sure that multiple concentric agencies are aware of how the others are going to respond, or how to respond in concert with them, to be able to, to deal with the situation is incredibly important. And I think that that is, you know, that'll certainly be one of my, one of my, priority, going into office, if God willing, I'm elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fava?
I guess one of the issues that, I mean, a lot of things have come up, and hopefully the most important issues did, in my opinion. One of the things that I wanna make sure is that we, the county commissioners are running the county government. Some recent reforms were made to the county government structure, so that the county administrator would not be the overseer of all 13, I believe, departments in Carroll County. So the county commissioners should be doing their jobs. We pay them to do these jobs, and we elect them to do these jobs. So I want county commissioners to do their jobs, and we should not be outsourcing our job, the, the job of county commissioner to a county administrator position. I am glad that some reforms have been made to correct this issue. Additionally, I wanna talk about conflicts of interest when it comes to funding government programs. And we gotta be mindful, and we kinda need to tighten the, the ability for people to recuse themselves. We kinda need to tighten the requirements to recuse, for people to recuse themselves from funding programs that they are themselves involved in, or have a direct family members involved in as well. I, so we need to have important standards for conflict of interest in order to prevent corruption. And additionally, I do not want Carroll County to create a boys' club culture of politicians. I do not want Carroll County having establishment and public, public sector union picking the candidates who then pick the policies. I want candidates and office holders who are elected by the people, accountable to the people, because they are serving the people who vote for them. So that's what I wanna be as county commissioner as well.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin?
I think as county residents, we have to be very cautious when we start talking about progress, economic development, and some things that lead to the need for more infrastructure. I would just take you, take a look at the surrounding areas, and see what could become, and what we do not have here. What we have here is very, is beautiful, very proud to live in Carroll County. It is a gorgeous area, and I think that slow, steady, planned growth is essential. If you wanna watch things get a little out of whack, run next door to Frederick County sometime, and run around. Better yet, drive up to Lancaster County. These guys that have land up there are selling it fast as they can to come here and buy it. Three, three dollars up there will buy, I didn't say that right. Grounds bring you three times as much there as it is here, for agricultural land, 'cause they're developing it there. So my approach is that although I am, I am for progress, I am for slow progress, and I wanna see that happen. Because when you rush into things, now you're gonna either have to have more schools, more roads, more everything, and more everything costs money. And we have people that say, I don't wanna pay property tax. Well, then we don't need more real quick, do we? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
I'm not sure if I have one particular issue that's personal or anything, but I do want to make clear that if an issue comes up, or if there's problems, or I'm talking about something significant like the opioid, opioid crisis, I would much rather have some form of hearing, some form of gathering, something in which we could bring people together in, in this society, be it emergency medical, be it some form of experts, be it community leaders. And I wanna figure out exactly what the resolution to the problem is, and move forward from there. Because there's been a lot of statements made here tonight, and there's been a lot of statements made in the media, that is very highly emotional, and lacks any foundation in facts, or evidence, or any sort of foundation by which we can move forward. And I wanna make sure that we could move forward, have a resolution, and work on whatever the problems may be, rather than just slapdash something together, say we fixed the problem, and then five, 10, 20 years have to deal with it again. So I just wanna make sure that I want, it's clear that I would like to deal with these issues now, and fully and completely.
Thank you. And that wraps up the Q and A. And again, I'd like to thank everybody who brought up a question from the audience tonight, and everybody who sent one in. We really appreciate it, and we're sorry we did not get to all of them, but we got to as many as we could in the time allotted. So to wrap things up, we're gonna move on to closing statements, and we've come all the way back around to Mr. Fava. So if you could start us off, and again, everyone has two minutes, so go right ahead, sir.
All right. Let's kinda just review of some of the things that we talked about tonight. We talked about law enforcement, and just to wrap up some of my beliefs in that, I believe that we need to have top-notch law enforcement. That means we cannot have impropriety and perjury in the law enforcement, and we need to fund law enforcement that combats the opioid crisis in our county. Moving on to that issue, you know, I believe that this is more of a supply side, because I believe that the existence and presence of external vice creates an external temptation that creates demand and usage. So I believe that we need to combat the supply of this. Ultimately, this does eventually lead down to our southern border crisis, but, and that affects us here in Carroll County, but we cannot just use that as an excuse. Moving on to the fire department, and how we talked about how we're going to, and I want to recap how I promoted a more incremental approach to the professionalization of the fire department in Carroll County, as mentioned by other candidates here. This is, we're professionalizing it because of a lack of volunteers. So the best way to do that is incrementally. Back to the education issue, and I believe there's some solid agreement here that we should be supporting education. However, I believe I stood out in having more of the principles on the issue to support the Board of Education, provided that they do not subvert the values of our county, and, and, you know, support indoctrinating our children with toxic ideology. Lastly, I just wanna focus on who I am as a candidate. I'm Ray Fava. I'm a Christian, a husband, and a father. That's why I'm running. I'm running so that the county is good for my children. I'm running that the county can be a conservative bastion of freedom, in a deep-blue state like Maryland. And I ask for your vote this primary cycle.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin?
Well, firstly, I'd like to let you know that I am not a politician. I'm a little rough around the edges at times. This particular style of forum, I'm a little off balance. I'm not used to talking, sitting down like this. Having said that, I want you to take away, if anything, that I am pro-business minded. My business happens to be in agriculture. But here in Carroll County, and in the state of Maryland, we are faced with so many taxing issues. On my own farm, for example, I have to get permit, a permit, to pull water out of Pipe Creek that runs through my land. I have to record how much water I use for irrigation, report that. I have to get permits to shoot deer if they are gonna eat, we grow sweetcorn, and that is a deer attractant. I also, during the summertime, when I'm spraying sweetcorn, I cannot shoot bucks. I can only shoot the does. So guess what congregates in there and eats all the corn? The ones with horns do. There's some common sense approaches that I think we need to make in Carroll County. I, I do excel at having a little bit of foresight and common sense. I know who to talk to about getting the right ideas to fix these problems. I don't know them all. I see my time's running down, so to let you know, I'm a property owner. I own a farm in preservation. I own residential property, and I pay heap'em big taxes. Carroll County values, I believe very strongly in. I believe preserve farmland is one of the things that makes our county very unique. It certainly attracts a lot of people to the area. As a result, it's driving up prices of both housing and land. Maybe that's an unattended, yeah, consequence we didn't look forward to. I wanna represent our taxpayers with efficiencies in government. I'd also like to say that I highly support veterans. My wife is a disabled combat veteran. We're active here at the American Legion, and at the VFW. And vote for Thomas E. Irwin, Jr. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
Some of the topics we've discussed, we've discussed here tonight, I've actually already written about on my website, and I do want to apologize for the fact that it's still marked District Four in my email and web address, because I was moved afterward. But I don't want that to reflect that I don't particularly care about District One or Tawny Town. This is a county-wide position, and I know I'm not necessarily a presence up here. But I do believe in doing what's right for Carroll County as a whole, and I wanna put some of my skills, some of my technical skills, some of my troubleshooting skills, some of my analysis skills, in doing what's best for Carroll County, improving our process, improving our technology, and making it efficient, providing what services we can correctly. And I do support issues like the veterans, and my, my father's also a veteran, and also critical services like EMS, fire, law enforcement. I consider that infrastructure, I consider infrastructure important. I don't wanna privatize it, or have other institutions responsible. And I think that there's a couple of issues that need to be addressed in Carroll County. It needs to be addressed wholly and completely, and I want to start making efforts and inroads, and improving our county, and bringing it up into 21st century, not just technology-wise, but also in regards to other services as well.
Thank you. And Mr. Vigliotti, you get the last word.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time tonight. I hope this evening you've gotten a better sense of who I am and where I stand on the issues which we face. If you have any questions, I certainly hope that you'll reach out to me. As I said earlier, I'm not perfect. I don't know everything. I'm not afraid to ask questions, and I'm not afraid to be the only one to take a stand on a given issue. But I always do try to follow my heart to do what is right. But ask yourselves, how do you know that I'll pursue the things that I've talked about here tonight? And it's simple, because I've already done them as a councilman. I have a strong record of accomplishments, and I've spent nine years building relationships, improving communication with other elected officials, and working to strengthen cooperation with the county and our state delegation and state senator, because we do not exist alone, and because there are issues which require a concerted effort. The experience I've accumulated as a councilman, I'll bring to service for the county as a whole. And the county is home for all of us. Each of us have our reasons for building our lives here, but at the heart of all of them is one, and that's love of home. Home is something that is central to our nature as human beings. It resonates in our souls against the very course of time, and through the choices and experiences which, like our Creator God, make us who we are. And I believe in my heart that the best days of our country and our county are still ahead, but we are responsible for the choice to stand in the morning sunlight, or turn away. And I refuse to turn away, because I love our home. And it's from love of home that I'm running for county commissioner in District One. And so I humbly ask for your support. Thank you again for your time this evening, and thank you to everyone up here as well. May God always bless you. May God always bless Carroll County. Thank you.
So that concludes our forum for tonight. Thank you to all the candidates who joined us this evening. Thank you to our live audience, and to everyone who submitted questions for the candidates tonight. And special thanks to the Tawny Town Senior Center for making this facility be of, excuse me, facility available to us this evening. Coverage of the District One County Commissioner Candidates Forum will be rebroadcast on cable channel 1086, starting on Wednesday, June 8th, at 7:00 PM. It will also be available for on-demand viewing, on the Community Media Center's website, carolmediacenter.org. Before we leave, we would encourage all eligible residents to register to vote before the June 28th deadline. Voting is not just a right, it's our responsibility, and every vote counts. So please take the time to learn about all the candidates running in the 2022 primary, and be sure to vote, whether by mail, through early voting, or by coming out to the polls on Election Day, July 19th. Thank you all, and good night.